Okay, this is the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education, April 23rd, 2019. Can I have a motion to enter into exec session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personal employment status and superintendent's contract?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We're in exec session. Okay, welcome to the Hyde Park Board of Education meeting on April 23rd, 2019. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Jeff, I do have an agenda modification. I think we talked about it just before.
Yeah, I thought we were going to do that when we hit that.
Okay, alright, okay.
Okay, the upcoming events. This Friday and Saturday, Friday at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 2:00 PM, there is a play at Ralph R. Smith called Pinocchio. I urge all people to attend that. Pinocchio Junior? Also on Wednesday, April 24th, Jazz Cabaret at 7:00 PM at FDR. Monday, April 29th, the third graders meet the instrument night at FDR. That'll be at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, April 30th, National Honor Society induction at FDR. That's at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, May 1st, the FDR Spring Concert Number One at 7:00 PM at FDR. And Saturday, May 4th, that is, the SATs will be starting at 8:00 AM at FDR. Sunday, May 5th, the District Arts Festival and the FDR Senior Arts Show. That's at FDR from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. On Tuesday, May 7th, Havilin Middle School's Spring Concert Number One at 7:00 PM at Havilin. And Wednesday, May 8th, the LT meeting will be here at the district office at 6:30 PM.
Over at HPE.
At HPE. Okay. And Thursday, May 9th, there'll be two things going on. The Havilin Spring Concert Number Two at 7:00 PM at Havilin. And the public hearing on code of conduct for 2019-2020 and the school budget, followed by the regular Board of Education meeting here at the district office. The public hearing will start at 6:30.
Another announcement, and that's the HPTA is sponsoring a blood drive on April 30th from 2:00 to 7:00 over at Hyde Park Elementary. So, thank you to the HPTA for continuing to host a blood drive and helping out our area blood banks.
Okay, we're on to pride. Does anyone have any pride?
I actually don't have any this meeting just because of the spring break last week. So, we only had two days of school.
Any other one? Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have two things. One is, was it the last meeting or the one before where I reported on the regulations for substantial equivalency? That was the regulation that's been on the books for 70 years where the private schools within your residential area, your district boundary lines, should be evaluated. I did reference throughout my presentation that we were told by the commissioner it was law and that we had to follow that and that we were aware that there were some lawsuits, but that our marching orders were to proceed according to the plan that she outlined when I went for my training on how to do this. It did go to, let's see, it did go to the Supreme Court and there is a new ruling that the commissioner did not follow the guidelines that are set forth in the State Administrative Procedures Act. And so, everything is on hold or can't proceed as she outlined. Specifically, the ruling notes that where the prior guidance was made about statements explaining what superintendents would do, should do, the commissioner presented us with new guidance that repeatedly stated that superintendents shall do and will do. And basically, the Supreme Court said that she did not have the authority to make that kind of a change. It went further that Education Law 3204, which is the ones that she was, the one that she was citing, is specific with regard to setting forth that the commissioner is the entity that determines whether non-public elementary and secondary schools are in compliance with the academic requirements. So, it's back on her lap and the state education department's lap to either follow the State Administrative Procedures Act for coming up with new rules. So she either needs to follow the regulations on how to make new rules or, I don't know. But anyway, so I do not have to, at this moment in time, evaluate the five or six private and parochial schools that are within our district. So, it was, nor does the board have to publicly vote on whether or not they agree with my rating of those schools. So, stay tuned to that. The next is, she's had off the press, just came in today. As you know, we conducted a long-range facilities planning study and we contracted with Western Suffolk BOCES to prepare the report. They will be coming in June, I think it's the first June meeting, and they'll present their findings of our capacity. I did ask her point-blank, you know, the one question we were all nervous about was, does the report indicate that we would have any movement on the ability to close a school? And she said, no, all the findings do not support that we're in that position. But, that's jumping the gun a little. We'll let her present the findings. It is, somebody had asked, why do we use Western Suffolk BOCES to do this? It's a pretty complicated formula that they use and it's very heavy in statistical analysis for demographics, both nationally, state, county, and then specifically down to New York State. There are only a few people throughout New York State that do these types of studies. A lot of, several of the school districts in our area have used Western Suffolk BOCES. So I give the board members this as some light reading material for, actually, I think a lot of you are much more interested in statistics and data. But, we will, I am going to see if I can put an electronic copy up. Aviva, Linda, Elliot, and I have all reviewed the draft. This is, we provided further information. I thought they did an excellent job and I'll say so when they come here. But if you would like to, there's two ways we can do this. You can certainly be prepared with any questions when they come in June and/or as a result of any questions you may have after she gives her presentation. We can certainly record the questions and receive answers back either by inviting her back or conferencing with her with a smaller group or just via email. But, a lot of fascinating demographic information in the report and then a lot of specific information on how we're utilizing our schools, our classrooms, and providing all of the services to our students that are now required. Patrick, I have an extra copy of the report if you would like it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll give it to you before you leave tonight. How's that? Yeah.
Okay.
You have to wait until you give a report on everything.
No, thank you.
Okay, on to 7.2. The Dutchess County BOCES 2019-2020 admin budget. Linda?
So, the reason that the board is meeting tonight is tonight's the night that you get to vote on the BOCES budget. The portion that we get to vote on, or the board gets to vote on, is the administrative budget, which includes their general admin budget and the retiree benefits. So, this is the only slide that I have. It shows in total the budget compared to 2018-19. The portion that you're voting on is near the top under the 1920 column. It's the $4.6 million. That's the total administrative budget for BOCES that all the school districts in the county can vote on tonight. Also in their admin budget is the capital rentals, but that's not voted on. So in total, their budget excluding their capital project, their big capital project is 6.2 million.
Thank you.
But like I said, you're only voting on the general administrative cost and the retiree benefits portion of 4.6 million. At the bottom of the page, we show the cost or the share for Hyde Park. So for the two amounts that you're voting on, Hyde Park share is the $380,704. In total, their admin budget for Hyde Park is $502,000. But like I said, that doesn't include the BOCES capital project of $392,000 that we'll be paying next year. You'll vote on this later on, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How do they calculate our percentage again?
It's based on the number of students that we have compared to the students in other school districts.
Okay.
What happens if we, if, I mean, so the 13 component districts are voting on it?
Right.
So they need a majority?
They need a majority of the school districts to approve the budget.
Not that I expect it would happen, but what happens if they don't get a majority vote?
I think they would have, I'm not exactly sure, but I think they might either have to go to keeping their costs the same as last year. I don't know if they have the option of having another vote. Yeah.
We can get the answers to that, it's just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. I can find right.
I mean, it's ironic, it's a very small percentage of their real, all their costs.
Yeah, most of their costs are based on what the school district signed up for. So their expense budget matches what they expect to get in revenues.
Right.
So most of our budget for BOCES are all the services that we signed up for.
Yeah, yeah. Which are all subject to change.
Yes.
Up until the time it happens.
And it does change.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so, Linda, can I stay up?
Sure.
For our preliminary budget, 7.3.
So, the budget hasn't changed at all since our last meeting. So I'm going to go through this fairly quickly because we did, I did present it when we were at FDR last time. This presentation is on the website as well as all our other presentations. After the board adopts the budget tonight, we'll have more detailed information on the website too. We will put together the detailed line-by-line budget, which will also be available in all the school buildings. I'll have copies that I can distribute to anyone that wants them electronically, but those have, the detailed budget, we call it the public budget document, has every account code and the budget for that. So our budget is $98.7 million. It's a $3.6 million increase over the current year or 3.83%. Our levy, our tax levy, would be $61.9 million, which is a $1.7 million increase or 2.9%. And that 2.9% is within the tax cap, it's the maximum amount that we're allowed to levy. And here's the total expenditures. It's the $98.7 million, a $3.6 million increase. I won't go through the details on this unless any board members would like to talk about Here we have our revenues. Again, our revenues have to match our expenditures. So here too, the total is $98.7 million, which is a $3.6 million increase over the current year. We do have to show the budget in the three components, the program, administrative, and capital. So in that public budget document that I talked about earlier, which we'll have available this week, we'll, we break that down by program, admin, and capital. We have one report with all of the account codes that fit into the program portion, another report that's all the administrative costs, and a third one for all capital. Included in next year's budget is a security project for door hardening. This is the first time we've included it in the budget. We expect to spend up to $240,000. That won't let us secure all of the doors in the district, so we'll continue to add this to our budgets each year until we can complete the whole district. But we can expect to get aid back of about 64%, actually closer to 65%. So if we spend the full $240,000 and we stay within the threshold of a maximum cost of $1,000 for interior doors or $5,000 for exterior, we can expect to get back $155,000 in aid. Also included in the budget is the two capital outlay projects. So these are cash capital projects. Whenever we spend cash on a capital project, we have to point that out separately in the budget. We're not borrowing for this, but it is a capital project for which we can receive building aid. The first project is a $100,000 project to renovate the men's bathroom at the FDR lobby. A few years ago, we did the women's room and we'd like to complete that project. And the second one is for the upgrades to the technology infrastructure at FDR. And we plan to do that at the same time that we're doing the HVAC work. So in total, for these two projects, it would cost, after state aid, it would cost $394,000. But we do have to spend the $1.1 million first. So we have two pages of budgetary additions. Nothing is different from the last time I went over this, so I won't go through the In total, we're adding $1.4 million to the budget, but most of that is the tech project at FDR of $1,015,000. And here we have the budget savings. We're removing about $947,000 from the budget. We have 10 teachers retiring. We're reducing the teaching staff by three and a half. Two of the, I'm sorry, two and a half are through attrition, through the people that are retiring. And then we're also reducing by another full-time teaching staff. We're also moving some of our professional services that we currently pay through BOCES. And we're moving our trauma-informed practices, that's the program that's known as Sanctuary, into a federal grant. We do have three propositions on the budget, or on the ballot. The second one is for the school bus replacement plan. We're asking to purchase, replace nine school buses and to also buy a snowscraper. In total, the cost is $753,000. We can expect 60% in aid in the following year. So the net cost after state aid would be $319,700. And the third proposition is for the student board member. It's not to elect the student board member, but it's just to give us permission to have a student board member. And we have to have this on the ballot once every two years. If the budget isn't approved by the voters in May, we have a few choices. We could resubmit the same budget for another vote in June, or we could revise the budget and put that revised budget up for vote in June. Or the board could go directly to a contingency budget. If we did that, we couldn't increase the tax levy at all, but we would also have to reduce expenses by $3.1 million. This slide just shows everything that we would have to take out of a contingency budget on the left-hand side. Everything on the right-hand side are non-mandated programs, so we could remove those from a contingency budget if we had to.
Of course, if you're looking at that one.
This is the calculation to get to the contingent budget amount. We'd have to remove the salary increases for managerial confidential staff, they're non-unioned. We wouldn't be able to buy any equipment. We couldn't buy supplies for students. And we wouldn't be able to have those two cash capital projects. And we would also have to reduce our admin cost by $763,000. Here we just show the contingent budget compared to the proposed budget. So we're asking for a budget increase of 3.83% with a tax levy increase of 2.9. If the board did adopt a contingent budget, the tax levy increase would be zero and the budget-to-budget increase would be 0.57% or $540,000.
Disaster.
So, like Jeff mentioned earlier, our budget hearing is on May 9th and we would present the budget again at that time. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Tonight is the night that we're asking the board to adopt the budget too.
And Linda, we're on the website. Could the public find the budget information? There's a couple places.
Yeah, right now, it's under the business office webpage, but after the board adopts it, tomorrow, we'll put a link right on the front page of the website.
Okay.
To the budget page.
Any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
Alright, thank you.
At this time, we'll move to public participation. Could I have a motion for public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and say your name.
My name is Sarah Olson. I'm a senior at FDR. I wrote Mr. Partey a letter regarding the graduation ceremony seating and you all also received it. I do appreciate the time he took with me to speak with me personally, but I didn't really receive much of an answer, so I'd just like to know the board's response.
At this time, we only get to ask the question. When we close the public participation, then we can answer. Does anybody else would like to address the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. So Sarah, under my interpretation, this is up to Rick Partey and for him to work that out. So it should be coming from Rick, at least from my point of view. Any other?
I agree. I thought your letter had merit though, just so. And I also thought that perhaps some of that could be optional depending on the students' wishes. But Jeff is correct, that is the principal's decision.
And I do believe parents' consideration is to be involved in too, not just the students'. So it's a much bigger picture to be looked at.
And, go ahead Denise, you first.
I just, while you know that, I mean, I read it and really heard you. I'm quite torn on the topic myself. And while I do appreciate that it's the decision of the principal to make that decision and I will support whatever decision is made. I think there's two sides to it and I think that it was valuable, you know, you're to be commended, you know, for wanting to take into consideration, you know, your entire student body and to want to be inclusive. And I think that that's something we all want to do. At the same time, I also see the merit in, you know, holding up and representing, you know, some people who have achieved certain merits as well. So it is complicated in that, but I really appreciate your letter and I really appreciate your writing that.
Any else?
Jeff, where is it going to go from here? Is somebody going to contact Rick and make sure he's making this decision or we're expecting a confirmation of his current plans?
My, I think he made the decision, but I will double-check with him. And my, okay, I will definitely, especially Sarah, if you don't feel that it has been definitively answered, I will definitely check with Mr. Partey. I do know that the only conversation that I had had was around that this came up at one point, was it last year?
Comes up a lot.
And, but I mean formally, all the way up into a, has it made it to a public's board meeting other than last year?
Yeah. It came to the board meeting last year.
Last year, right. And if there was some talk of getting some survey or weigh-in from students, this was the seniors last year, and I know that that didn't happen formally. So, the only thing I think that was surprising for Mr. Partey was that it came up again now and in the interim between last year and this year, what he had thought might have happened with some of the students doing a survey, this again, were last year's seniors, hadn't happened. But I will check with Mr. Partey and make sure that wherever he lands on this, one way or another, and I do want to commend you, it was a beautifully written letter and it certainly had some very compelling points as to why we may or may not want to do that. There are some school districts in other parts of the states that have gone so far as they don't do a valedictorian and a salutatory and they do honor students. So, you know, it's timely, it's controversial, it has multiple sides, but it's an excellent letter and I'll follow up with Mr. Partey.
And I think one of the bigger picture items is really, you know, for student recognition, that's a big positive, whether it's academically or athletically, right? So where do you draw the line, right? I mean, do you say we're not going to do, you know, academic stuff versus, you know, when kids do college signings, right? That's a very positive thing, but not everybody's athletically inclined to get that. But we do recognize though. So it is a very touchy subject because we do really like, you know, recognition for high achievers. So again, where do you draw the line? So that's why it's a difficult topic whenever it comes up.
And I just had to say, just because I remembered it, BOCES did start something recently and at our next meeting, we will recognize for the second time this year, and this is very new, where they're bringing students in the beta program who have, you know, who are being recognized for success. And the success may not be an academic number, but just really engaging in their program and doing their work. So there's movement on really recognizing all kinds of students and, but I will say that this is the first year I've ever seen where the beta students have a recognition, a formal recognition program. So, and we were just fortunate that this year we'll have had two. So out of 13 districts in the county, for two of the months, and there's only 10 months, we have that. And we do have our avid students come in to a board meeting to make a presentation. So I think we've tried to strike that balance. Maybe it doesn't happen at graduation, but we do try to strike that balance. Do the avid students wear a sash? So, but we'll continue to look at this from all angles and I will talk to Mr. Partey.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for bringing it up so. On to 9.1. On to 9.1, Board Subcommittee Reports.
The Policy Committee met yet again. There was a couple left-out of policies concerning the code of conduct, and when you get to see the new proposals for expenses, please read it carefully, because it's a major change to a per diem system. So I'm sure you may have questions after you've read them, and you can either, I would recommend you address them to Linda. But as a group, we did come up with the plan. I think it's going to be very well-accepted by the employees, so, and I think it's a good way to do it, so.
But that's not on this agenda.
No, not yet.
Any other reports?
Yeah, I would just mention that this isn't as much of a report, but maybe an advertisement, that on May 2nd will be the Dutch County School Board Association is having a meeting. We're having a special speaker coming in from the New York State School Facilities Association and doing a presentation on facilities assessment, which is a service that the association provides to the districts throughout the state, helping better understand how their facilities are being run, whether it be custodial or maintenance operations, cleanliness. That's one of the services that the association provides. And they'll also touch on a number of the other benefits and things that, as facilities directors, all the facilities directors throughout the state typically belong to this association. There's education and training that's available, benchmarking. So it's just an opportunity for the association to help educate school districts on the services out there, encourage their members, typically your director of facilities and operations are members of the association, there's benefits associated with that, so. And meetings are open to everyone. If that's an interesting topic to you, obviously it is to me, it could be an interesting presentation. 7:00 PM on May 2nd at the BOSI's administrative offices.
At this point, do we nominate you to succeed Tim Kremer?
No.
But that was big news.
That's big news, yeah.
With the New York State School Boards, is the retiring of their executive director.
I think you'd be fabulous.
I don't think we have any topics up for board discussion. Could I have a motion for 10.1 to 10.7 consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education Placements?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Jeff, I'd like to recommend removal of the first of the two packets of IEPs that were recommended. There was some confusion. I believe the packet we originally received was the incorrect packet. I've got an update in front of me, but I've not had a chance to review it, and I talked to Aviva briefly about it, and she says there's no absolute urgency to have it, so I think we can delay it till the next meeting so I can review it before making my recommendation.
Can I have a second to remove 17, 18 Special Education Placements?
Second.
Any discussion? We're voting on the amendment. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, so can I have a, we'll vote on 11.1 as amended. All those in favor? All the motion carries. Kevin, motion for 11.2, Vote on the BOSI's Budget.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion of 11.3, Election of Dutch County BOSI's Board Members?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm reluctant to vote for Ralph Coats. So I will personally not vote for him. I don't think he's a good person to be on that board, but you guys can do whatever you want.
I will say that I would really like to see other people wanting to be on that board, as with all of our boards. It's just, it's, we're not seeing enough new blood. I mean, I think that the core of that board has been there a long time, and not that I'm critical of what they're doing, but I think that it's time to see more people, new people on. So if you should find time in your schedule, Doug, I think that next year would be a good opportunity.
Let's see, what's the divorce rate in Dutch County?
I think about 5 percent.
To that point, what's our?
We're supposed to vote on whether or not.
No, at this point, these are the only two candidates that are available.
Yeah. But doesn't mean we have to vote for him.
We've done in the past, we just.
Can we split them out?
Yeah.
And do them separately?
You can.
Are you, do you want to make an amendment to split them into two separate votes?
Okay. I'd like to amend the items to be in two parts, voting separately on each member.
I second that.
All those in favor on the amendment? Motion carries. So can I have a, so as a separate, do we make them as?
Chimento first.
Okay. So those in favor of Ralph?
Chimento.
Chimento. One in favor?
Yep.
Those, everyone? Okay, all those in favor of Ralph Coats?
I was just going to say, I have to vote for him.
All those opposed?
Any else?
Okay.
So wait, is Doug abstaining, or is he?
No, he voted.
In favor. It was late.
Wait, so what was the vote?
Perry, Denise, and Carl. I said against.
Don't change anything. There's only two people, there's two points.
Okay.
Two things, and there's two people running. It's just, I feel.
Cut up?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion for 11.4, Proposed Hyde Park Central School District 2019-2020 Budget?
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Good job. Thank you for Linda. Excellent job again.
All those in favor? Motion carries. We have a motion for 11.5, School Property Tax Report Card.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We have a motion for 11.6, The Overnight Field Trip Mystic Hartford, Connecticut.
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. This is a trip, they're traveling two and a half hours, to spend two hours there and then two and a half hours back? If I, well, I think it's two and a half, two and a half, and two and a half, but.
It's overnight.
It's an overnight field.
Did I miss the date on it? Okay, sorry. Sorry. I was thinking, this is crazy.
It says overnight field trip sort of implies that it's overnight.
Yeah, I know, I know, but the dates didn't line up.
So I do have a question. The bus that's listed, do we, does George vet these?
Yes.
He has to.
I personally have never heard of this bus carrier, not that it isn't a reputable one, but.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Linda, who supervises transportation and knows the actual regulation there.
Well, George actually meets all of the buses, even if it's not one of our Hyde Park bus. And he speaks, he inspects the bus, and he talks to the bus driver to make sure that he feels.
From a reputation of company, we are good, we look at a safety record and stuff like that, prior to the day of.
Yes, yes. But he also meets every bus before it leaves.
Okay, good. No matter how early.
No matter how early.
I can attest to that.
All right, good. Thank you.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for 11.7, The 2019-2021 Academic Intervention Services Plan?
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We have a motion for 11.8, The District Calendar for 2019-2020 School Year.
Some moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Everybody comfortable with it? Got it all worked out? It's just one of these things that always seems to be, looks good on paper in April.
Yeah, it's been difficult with the changes, but Aviva spearheaded the committee, Jay sits on the committee, we have reps from every bargaining unit on the committee. It's a grueling process because of the changes, but we're in compliance, and we think we can pull it off. No, we're comfortable with it.
Yeah, yeah, we're in compliance, we've got everything in that you need to get in. It's sort of like a puzzle, like a 3D puzzle.
Yeah.
So I think we have it.
The kiss of death.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for public participation?
Some.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, your second chance to address the board, if you would like to go to the microphone. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Okay.
Right now adjourned.